Hi friends, welcome to I A C. Here we will discuss Target S S C J L C H S L English Session Number Fifteen. So, let us look at the question. Select the option that is the indirect form of the given sentence. Right? So, direct speech and indirect speech question. Manoj said to his friends, right? Comma, so comma is present because it is a verb. Nothing but direct speech is present. That is correct. I work in the telecom sector, right? Said to, said to is past tense. That is correct. Past tense is present because inverted commas are present. The verb and tense change. So, normal sentence should change. When I say normal sentence, this is abnormal sentence. If I say if it is a universal truth, scientific fact or daily action, it should change. It is not that sort of sentence, right? So, it is simple tense change. And then work, work is V one which is in your present tense. Present tense is present, work is worked. So, it is simple present tense. That is correct. Simple present tense is present. Also, work is done, was was which is your past continuous tense. This is gone, should have worked, simple way to do is worked. Because if there is shell, we should add. Correct. So, the question answer is not even a second, right? So, C is your right answer. Next. Select the most appropriate meaning of the given idiom. What is the meaning of this idiom? Down for the count. A count is down. If somebody is down for the count. If I say hey, he is down for the count. He is looking very tired, he is looking very lazy or he is looking hopeless. Now, what is it? He is hopeless. Now, I am saying he is down for the count. That is, he is defeated or he is defeated. He is defeated or he is defeated. Down for the count. Here, there is only one option. D, having been defeated or very near to being defeated. Having been defeated is present. Perfect tense is present. Perfect tense is completion. Defeated or near to being defeated. If defeated, it is present. So, D is your right answer. There is also a count based. Count on is present. There is a phrase, count on. I remember this. This is also present. Count on is to expect, expect something to happen. Anything is happening, we expect something to happen. Simply say, depend on something. We say bank on something. If you bank on something, it means you are depending upon something, right? You depend upon something. Also, count on, count on is dependent. For example, say, I count on my brother when in difficulties. When difficulties are present, I count on my brother. That depends on him. Count on. So, down for the count. If countdown starts, it is present. Or it is present. Or it is present. Or it is present. Down for the count. This is easy. Next. Third question. Select the most appropriate option to fill in the blank in the given sentence. Fill in the blank context is correct. Context is reading. What is reading? According to the international forum for rights and security. Rights and security is built. International forum. According to, based on. It is standard. China's unethical, unethical is insincere, insincere, insincere or immoral. Immoral negative word. China's unethical practice, China's unethical practice. Then, a practice is forced organ harvesting. Forced organ harvesting is an unethical practice. Here, harvesting is gathering. We harvest crops. We use it as a fertilizer. Or this is present. This is present. From a body, from a person, from an animal, from a seller. We experiment. I will write it. Remove, remove a cell from a person or an animal for the purpose of experiment. For experiment. So, this is present. Now, because it is clear, we are very clear about context. We tell it. Here, we choose the blank. This is important. Right? China's unethical practice of forced organ harvesting is serving a dash purpose. This purpose is served. Unethical is clear. So, negative purpose or positive purpose? Obviously, negative purpose is present. Negative word is present. Commercial which is negative. Nefarious is negative. Now, I have negative words. Easy to do. Negative, positive words. Amicable, amicable is friendly. Friendly is present. Or pleasant is present. Uncool is present. Educational is present. So, nefarious is sinful. Bad. Bad. Sinful, right? Synonyms are present. Vicod. Vicod is present. Vicod fellow is sinful. Or there are synonyms. I will write it. Heinous, H E I N O U S. Heinous is nefarious. Nefarious is vicod, heinous is sinful. Also, odious is present. Iniquitous is present. Iniquitous, iniquitous is present. This is sinful. Nefarious, nefarious is sinful. Nefarious is vicod, heinous is odious, iniquitous. There are ubiquitous words. Ubiquitous is present. Only present, only ubiquitous is present. All is present. I know. So, what is the right answer? B. By this, context is present. It is negative tone, positive tone. This is present. After options, negative tone is present, positive is eliminated. Positive is present, negative is present. So, what is meanings are present. For question three, option B is your right answer. Next. Select the option that will improve the segment in bold of the given sentence. In case no improvement is needed, select no improvement. Boldly done, it is possible to improve. Grammatical. What is it? Women respond, women respond better from men to competitive exams. Better from. Right? Now, choosing, from is present. Why? To check. We blindly put rules. From, between and. But, comparison is present. Women respond to men. Men respond to men. Comparison is present. From is present. T H A N than. Now, look. Women respond better than men. To competitive pressure. Competitive is a preposition. Competitive pressure is present. Women respond equally. Men also respond. But, men is present. Women respond equally. This is better. Right? So, comparative degree. Better than, better than. I remember. Only one, next, one versus, one versus another, next, one versus all. Only one is positive degree. One versus another is comparative degree used. Only one versus all is super late degree used. Right? Good, better, best. Good, better, best. Heavy, heavier, heaviest. Intelligent, more intelligent, most intelligent. This is learned in comparison. If only positive degree is present, one versus another is present, comparative degree is present. Keywords are chosen. One versus all. If someone says super late degree is present. This is super late degree. So, it is present. What is the right answer? T H A N than, T H A N than. Then is present. At that point of time. Now opposite than is present. Now is present. This point of time. Then is at that point of time. Adverb is present. But, we require conjunction. Comparison is present. T H A N than is present. Good is present. If I say positive degree, of course, two is wrong. So, this is eliminated. Next. Fifth question. What is it? Select the most appropriate synonym of the given word. Right? So, synonym is present. Similar name is present. Similar is present. Similar is present. Happless. Remember. Hopeless, helpless is present. In meanings. Hopeless is negative. Negative, sad is present. If success is coming, if everything is bad, fail is coming. This is hopeless. Happless is present. Unlucky is present. Unlucky or unfortunate is present. Unfortunate. Luckless, luck is present. Happless, hopeless, helpless is similar sounding. Similar meaning. So, it is present. Annoying is present. Irritating is present. Irritating, right? He is annoying me. He is annoying me. Irritate is present. Irritate. Or infuriating is present. What is it? Infuriating, I N F U R I A T I N G. Infuriating is present. Or exasperating is present. Exasperating. Exasperating is present. Aspersion is present. Aspersion is present. Quarrel, right? A S P R. Here is root word. Aspersion, aspersion. A S P R S I O N. Aspersion is present. Good. Right? Quarrel. Or fight is present. Aspersion is present. What is it? What is it? I am trying to do it. Do it. Or criticize. Don't throw aspersion. He cast aspersion on me. Aspersion is present. I am negative. This is present. So, irritating, infuriating, exasperating. So, what is the meaning of this? Of course, right answer is direct. Unfortunate is direct. So, boring, boring is present. Anything is dull is boring. Right? Now, I will say monotonous. Very important word. Monot, monotonous. Monotonous is present. Boring is present. T D S is present. What is it? T D S. T D S is present. Right? Monotonous is boring. Repeatedly saying, saying. What is it? Boring, dull, monotonous. Monotonous is saying, saying. Repeatedly saying. Monotonous is present. Or T D S is present. Remember. Next, confused is present. Confused is present. Synonyms are present. Baffled is present. Perplexed is present. Bewildered is present. Et cetera is present. That is correct. These words are present. In exam point of view, this is important. Right? Next. What is the synonym hapless? Unfortunate. Sixth. Identify the segment in the given sentence which contains the grammatical error. Look. Look. Fifty percent. Then, fifty percent population is fifty percent. Population is fifty percent. Remember. Half is present. My fraction or percentage. These symbols are present. Half is present. Right? Countable noun, countable noun, countable noun is present. Right? Or uncountable noun is present. Right? I know. Uncountable noun is present. Singular is present. What is it? So, it is present. Singular is present. It is present. But, countable noun is plural. Of course, singular is present. But, plural is present. This is countable noun. Plural is present. It is present. It is plural. Understand? What is it? From a fraction, or a percentage. From a fraction, what is it? From a fraction, what is it? From a fraction, what is it? It is uncountable. For example, water is uncountable. Milk is uncountable. How uncountable? One water, one, two waters, three waters. One milk, two milks. We measure it. That is correct. So, when nouns are present, when uncountable nouns are present, fraction is present. What percentage is present? It is also uncountable. Right? But, plural is present. Fraction is present. Countable nouns are plural. From a fraction, percentage is present. But, this is plural. I will give a small example. Of course, I will answer. Now, concept, I will give example. Already answered. Fifty percent of the population. Population is present. Uncountable noun is present. Uncountable noun is singular. Singular is present. Population is present. Fifty percent is present. It is also population. It is also uncountable. Uncountable noun is present. So, it is present. What is it? Fifty percent of the population is present. Yes? So, by this, I will answer. What is it? B is your right answer. B is present. I have a small example. Now, I will say. Two thirds, two thirds of the students. Two thirds of the students. Also, two thirds of the students is missing. Next. Two thirds of the milk. Two thirds of the milk. Two thirds of the milk are damaged. What is it? Are damaged. These sentences are observed. Right? Two thirds of the. It is present. From what is it? Students are present. This is plural. Plural is present. Plural is present. So, it is present. Is present or is present. I know. Is is present. Singular is present. Or is present. But, there are two thirds. But, the milk is present. That is, milk is uncountable. When uncountable is present, it is also uncountable. That is correct. Right? So, it is present. Is present. I hope you got the point. Right? So, B is your right answer. B is your right answer. Next. Seventh. Select the option that will improve the segment in bold of the given sentence. In case no improvement is needed, select no improvement. Similar things. What is it? The National Curriculum Framework. The National Curriculum Framework, two thousand five assumes. That is, it is N C F. This National Curriculum Framework assumes. Assume is present. Suppose is present. Example is present. Suppose is present. That children's life is present. That is a conjunction. This is a sentence. What is it? Children's life at school. When children's lives are present. Must be linked to their life outside the school. Right? When they are present, or outside, general knowledge. Whether they are present or outside, they must be taught. This is the main idea. What is it? Children's life at school must be linked to their life outside the school. This is present. That is, they recommend and suggest. Right? So, suppose is present. What is it? N C F or National Curriculum Framework, two thousand five. Two thousand five is established. This is present. So, it is grammatical correct. But, context makes this life link to their life outside the school. Whether they are present or outside, they must be linked. This is present. So, recommends. What is it? Recommendations. Grammatical assumes correct. Notices correct. Right? But, this is general statement. Published is published. Right? If published, we think it is grammatical correct. But, context makes it worse. Because if published, news article is published. News is present. News is present. If published, wrong is present. However, it is easy. Right? So, notice is present. Aware is present. Tell it. Notice is present. Be aware of something. Tell it. Be aware, A W A R E. Aware of something. Right? He noticed many things. That is, he noticed. That is, he is aware. But, there is nothing. So, what is the right answer? Option A is your right answer. Recommend is present. Next. Eighth question. Right? Select the most appropriate opposite. Antonim is present. Of the given word. Allure. Allure is present. If something is alluring or if somebody allures someone else. If allure is present, attract is present. What is it? Attract. Or entice is present. What is it? Entice. Entice is present. Remember, attract is present. Easy is present. Repel is present. Or revolt. Revolt again. Is present. That is correct. Opposite is present. Antonim is careful. Synonym is present. Observe is present. Notice is present. Right? Perform is present. Act is present. Reflect is present. Reflect is present.[1256.22] रिफ्लेक्ट अंटे तेल्सु रिफ्लेक्ट अंटे रिफ्लेक्ट होतुंदी अंटे पुर मनको रिफ्लेक्स उपराणु उठाइकदा राइट टर्न बैक टर्न्स बैक अंटे वेनकु तेरुतुंदी रिफ्लेक्ट होतुंदा अंटे अप्रतिम मम मनवा वाइफ वेनकल्प बढ़तुंदी टर्न टर्न बैक अनि अंतम रिफ्लेक्ट अंटे राइट सो मत अनिकी अल्लूर अंटे एंटी रिवॉल्ट रिपल होतुंदी नाइंथ डी फ्रेम राइट सो मोस्ट अप्रूवरेट सिनेमियन ऑफ डी गिवन वर्ड डी फ्रेम चेयेदम अंटे सेटिल जेयेदम एदाइना सेटिल जेसेदम अरे सेटिल जेसेरादु अंतम सेटिल जेसेरादु अंटे पेमेंट चेयेदम राइट एदाइना पेमेंट चेसेदा नि सेटिल अंतर राइट सेटिल लेदा पे फर पे फर अनि कुड़ा अंतर राइट लेदा फंड चेयेदम ऑफ कोर्स सिनेमी मेडिकेट काबटी राइट आंसर एम होतुंदी फंड होतुंदी ड्रीम अंटे मीको तेल्सु राइट ड्रीम्स कलर लु अंतंकदा तेलुलो राइट रिक्वायरमेंट उठे रिक्वायरमेंट उठे नेसेसिटी उठे अनि तेल्सु स्ट्रगल डिफिकल्टीज अनि तेल्सु राइट सो मत अनिकी डी फ्रेम मीनिंग एडिगेट काबटी एंटी सेटिल लेदा फंड चेयेदम पे फर समथिंग नेक्स्ट डी इज योर राइट आंसर सिलेक्ट डी मोस्ट अप्रूवरेट ऑप्शन टू फिल इन डी ब्लैंक इन डी गिवन सेंटेंस अंताडु राइट चूड़ा डी वेस्ट बंगाल गवर्नमेंट एंड डी आईआईएम कैलकटा हैव जॉइंट हैंड्स देनकी टू डैश लीडरशिप राइट सो इधोका एक्टिविटी एम अना मनको हैव जॉइंट चेस हैंड्स जॉइंट चेसर अंता देनकोरकु टू डैश लीडरशिप ट्रेनिंग टू 1300 हेड्स ऑफ एजुकेशनल इंस्टिट्यूट्स एजुकेशनल इंस्टिट्यूट्स योका पदमबुड़ों दला हेड्स को लीडरशिप नु प्रसादिंच्छडानकी वालकु लीडरशिप नु प्रसादिंच्छडानकी ग्रांट चेयेदानकी प्रसादिंच्छडमु अनि इधि इंपार्ट वी विल इंपार्ट नॉलेज नॉलेज नु इंपार्ट जेस्टामो अंटे प्रसादिस्तामो वालकु अदि ट्रेन चेस्टामो अनि उद्देश्यम तो वस्तुंदी सो काबटी इंपार्ट हैव जॉइंट हैंड्स टू वी वो टू उठे काबटी वी वन सो डीलो अनि इधि ग्रामेटिकली करेक्ट होतदी जनरेट नेगोशिएट कुड़ा करेक्ट होतुंदी राइट ग्रामेटिकली बट कॉन्टेक्स्ट प्रकारणगा राइट प्रसादिस्तुनामो अंटे पास ऑन एंच इस्तुनामो पास ऑन लीडरशिप ट्रेनिंग इ लीडरशिप ट्रेनिंग अटे क्वालिटीज उठाइकदा ओके लीडर लो उठे क्वालिटीज अनि एला उठाली एला प्रवर्तिंचाली अनि इधि वालु इंपार्ट जेस्टारो अनि डील चेयेदम अंटे तेल्स कदा डील चेयेदम अंटे हैंडल आई कैन डील विद डी प्रॉब्लम अंतंकदा लेदा आई कैन डील इन आई डील इन स्टॉक मार्केट राइट डी प्रोफेशन उठन पुड़ डील इन वाड़ाली लेदा प्रॉब्लम नु हैंडल इस्तुनाम अंटे डील विथ वाड़ाली अदि मीको तेल्सु राइट नेक्स्ट जनरेट आई कैन जनरेट इनक्रम आई कैन प्रोड्यूस इनकम अंतंकदा नेगोशिएट नेगोशिएट एंटी एंटी वर्कआउट जेयेदम एदाइना वर्कआउट अंटे इफ यू मेक समथिंग पॉजिबल इफ यू मेक समथिंग पॉजिबल नेगोशिएशंस राइट नेगोशिएशंस चेस्टुन्नार अंतर कदा वर्कआउट चेस्टुन्नारो अनि दर्दंगा वस्तुंदी राइट सो मत अनिकी एम होतुंदी राइट आंसर इंपार्ट नेक्स्ट सो इधंता कुड़ा कॉन्टेक्स्ट बेस्ड क्वेश्चन सही भी ग्रामेटिकली का मनमो आंसर चेयेले मी इंदुकटे ऑफ कोर्स इकड़ा ऑप्शन्स अला उठनाई मनको ग्रामेटिकल ग्रामर हेल्प दोरकट्लेदु मनको ओनली कॉन्टेक्स्ट हेल्प अवर्ड योका मीनिंग्स परफेक्ट गाने अर्थम होते ने वी विल बी एबल टू आंसर 10th one B इज योर राइट आंसर 11th one मरी चूड़ा गिवन बिलो और फोर जंबल्ड सेंटेंसेस सिलेक्ट डी ऑप्शन डेट गिव्स डी करेक्ट ऑर्डर अंतुन्नाडु जंबल्ड सेंटेंसेस राइट सो इकड़ा क्यूवर्ड्स चूसकोवाली क्यूवर्ड्स एंटी एधि इंडिपेंडेंट इंडिपेंडेंट सेंटेंस अंटे इंट्रोडक्टरी अंटे इकड़ा मीको को आइडिया उठे कदा एंटी वर्ड जंबल्ड सेंटेंसेस इच्छयाडु अंटे अदोका कंप्लीट ओका स्टोरी लागा इस्ताड राइट अंटे अदि फ्रेम चेस्ना तरवता करेक्ट ऑर्डर लो फ्रेम चेस्ना तरवता ओका स्टोरी गाउंटुंदी स्टोरी के एपुडु कुड़ा इंट्रोडक्शन उठुंदी बॉडी उठुंदी तरवता कंक्लुजन उठुंदी इविदंगा उठुंदी इधि माइंड लो बेटकोने मनमो चूड़ा अंटे स्टार्टिंग पार्ट एम उठाली एंडिंग पार्ट एम उठाली मध्यलो पार्ट एम उठाली मध्यलो पार्ट बॉडी ऑफ डी मैसेज उठुंदी बॉडी ऑफ डी मैसेज उठुंदी लेदा टॉपिक उठुंदी दान गुरिंची एक्स्ट्रा इनफॉरमेशन इस्ताड मरी चूड़ा इफ यू वांट टू अचीव समथिंग ग्रेट यू नीड टू वर्क फॉर इट डे इन एंड डे आउट अंतुन्नाडु राइट तरवता यू सी रोम वास नॉट बिल्ट इन अन सिंगल डे ओके ते रोजलो रोम नगरम अनि इधि कट्टबड़ा लेदु चलो डी सेम इस ट्रू इफ यू वांट टू बिकम अन बेटर पर्सन अंतुन्नाडु तरवता इट टेक्स कांस्टेंट एफर्ट टू चेंज योर लाइफ एंड ट्रांसफॉर्म योरसेल्फ इनटू डी पर्सन यू वांट टू बी अंतुन्नाडु सरे इकड़ा चूड़ने डी डी सेम इस ट्रू इफ यू वांट टू बिकम अन बेटर पर्सन चूड़ने इफ यू वांट टू अचीव समथिंग मेरे एदाइना अचीव चेस्कोवाली अंटे ग्रेट समथिंग इफ यू वांट टू अचीव समथिंग ग्रेट फॉर एग्जांपल से ओके ओकरकी ओकटी ग्रेट उठुंदे अचीव जेस्कुड़म फॉर एग्जांपल से ओकतन कार कोवाल अंकुंतुन्नाडु दान अचीव चेस्कोवाली अपुड एंटी एग्जांपल एम इच्छयाडु यू नीड टू वर्क फॉर इट डे इन एंड डे आउट अंटे रोज मोत्तम कुड़ा वर्कआउट चायली दान गुरिंची दान गुरिंची कस्ता पड़ाली अंतुन्नाडु अदि ओके एग्जांपल अदि डी सेम इधे एग्जांपल इस ट्रू इफ यू वांट टू बिकम अन बेटर पर्सन ओका मटीरियल अंटे मटीरियल एधन मटीरियल गेंस अंटे ओका प्रोडक्ट कावाली नक्कार कावाली ओका टीवी कावाली ओका मंच मोबाइल कावाली अंटे दान गुरिंची कस्ता पड़ाली अलाने नुव मंच पर्सन अव्वाले अंटे गुड़ा कस्ता पड़ाली अंगा तप्पकुंडा ए तरवत एम रावाली सी रावाली ए तरवत एम रावाली सी रावाली एसी एकड़ उठे एसी कॉन्सिगिटिव इकड़ा लेदु एसी इकड़ा उठे ऑफ कोर्स एसी इकड़ा कुड़ा उठे इकड़ा सीए उठे आई थी ब आइना कावाली सी आइना कावाली चूड़ा ब तो डी इच्छयाडु इट टेक्स कांस्टेंट एफर्ट टू चेंज योर व्हाट टेक्स कांस्टेंट एफर्ट टू चेंज योर लाइफ एंड ट्रांसफॉर्म योरसेल्फ इनटू डी पर्सन यू वांट टू बी काबटी इधि मनमो इकड़ा इट कैनॉट बी डी बिगिनिंग ऑफ डी स्टेंटमेंट्स एधि तेस्कुंतुंदो तेलिदु सो काबटी मनमो ब चूड़ा मुख सारी यू सी रोम वास नॉट बिल्ट इन अन सिंगल डे रोम नगरम अनि इधि ओके ते रोजलो कट्टबड़ा लेदु मरी एम अंतुन्नाडु तरवता एम अंतुन्नाडु ए इफ यू वांट टू अचीव इकड़ा चूड़ने राइट मरी दिनके एग्जांपल दिनके इनका डिफाइन जेस्टुन्नाडु डिस्क्राइब जेस्तुन्नाडु डेफिनेशन अंटे डिस्क्राइब जेस्तुन्नाडु रदर का चप्पच अंटे दिन एला डिस्क्राइब जेस्तुन्नाडु इफ यू वांट टू अचीव समथिंग ग्रेट यू नीड टू डैश अंतुन्नाडु तरवता सी कनेक्ट चेस्न डी सेम इस ट्रू इफ यू वांट टू बिकम अन बेटर पर्सन तरवता इट टेक्स कांस्टेंट एफर्ट टू चेंज योर लाइफ अंटे एम अन्नाडु इरुंड इनफॉरमेशन उठे कदा अचीव बिग तरवता इट इस ट्रैन इफ यू वांट अंटे डी सेम इस ट्रू इफ यू वांट टू बिकम अन बेटर पर्सन की दान गुरिंचे मल्ली अदनंगा एम डिस्क्राइब चेस्डाडु इट टेक्स कांस्टेंट एफर्ट अंटे कंटिन्यूअस एफर्ट्स उठाली टू चेंज योर लाइफ एंड ट्रांसफॉर्म योरसेल्फ इनटू डी पर्सन यू वांट टू बी राइट दिन गुरिंचे एलोबरेट गा इकड़ी इच्छयाडु सो सी तरवत एम रावाली डी रावाली मत अनिकी सी इज योर राइट आंसर सी इज योर राइट आंसर नेक्स्ट 12th one इन डी फॉलोइंग क्वेश्चन सम पार्ट ऑफ डी सेंटेंस में हैव एरर्स फाइंड आउट विच पार्ट ऑफ डी सेंटेंस हैव एन एरर एंड सिलेक्ट डी अप्रूवरेट ऑप्शन ऑप्शन अंताडु इफ अन सेंटेंस इस फ्री फ्रॉम एरर्स सिलेक्ट नो एरर एरर स्पॉटिंग क्वेश्चंस राइट वन हेजिटेट्स टू ऑफर अन इंटरप्रिटेशन राइट सो वन वन अनि इधि इकड़ा मनको सब्जेक्ट होतुंदी ओकरु अंटे इकड़ा जनरल नाउन का चप्तुन्नाडु इंडेफिनाइट राधाम डेफिनाइट कादु इंडेफिनाइट गा एवर एन ओकरु वन हेजिटेट चेस्टाडु अंटा इधि पर भागन येम उठे वी वन यस थर्ड परसेंट सिंगुलर अंजय पे सी वी वन यस हेजिटेट्स देनकी हेजिटेट चेस्टाडु टू ऑफर अन इंटरप्रिटेशन अबाउट सच अन ओराकुलर प्रनाउंसमेंट आज डी रीडर राइट सो एवर एन अनि इप्पुर इंटरप्रिटेशन अंटे एंटी एवर एन चेप्पीन पुड़ने एवर एन पलिकन पुड़ दान इंटरप्रिट चेयेदम डिकोड जयेदम राइट तो अंटे अर्थमय वर्ड्स लो इतरलो कुछ चप्पड़ा अनि इधि इंटरप्रिटेट इंटरप्रिटेटर अंतर कदा इंटरप्रिटेशन और इंटरप्रिटेटर सो इविदंगा मीनिंग तेस्कोवच्यु सरे एम अंतुन्नाडु चूड़ा टू ऑफर अन इंटरप्रिटेशन अबाउट सच अन ओराकुलर प्रनाउंसमेंट इकड़ा गुरिंची अबाउट अंटे एंटी तेलुलो गुरिंची कानी इकड़ा योका अनि रावाली इंदुको दिन योका रिलेशन सच अन ओराकुलर प्रनाउंसमेंट इंटरप्रिटेशन राइट सो दिन योका इंटरप्रिटेशन एधि ओराकुलर प्रनाउंसमेंट एंटी 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 ओका स्पीच इस्तुन्नाडु एम इस्तुन्नाडु आ स्पीच योका इंटरप्रिटेशन स्पीच गुरिंची ना कादु स्प्रीच योका इंटरप्रिटेशन स्पीच योका अनि उद्देश्यम रावाली काबटी गुरिंची कादु अबाउट कादु ऑफ अन इंटरप्रिटेशन ऑफ सच अन ओराकुलर प्रनाउंसमेंट ओराकुलर स्पीच राइट सो आविदंगा मनमो अबाउट प्लेस लो एम रावाली ऑफ इला मनमो चलिबी नपुरंटे इधि मनमो लिंक चेकुंडा जादुते अबाउट कुड़ा करेक्ट अनि बेस्टुंदी कानी एपुडे ना गुर्तु पेटकोणी लिंक चेस्ट ओका वर्ड नु इनको को वर्ड को रिलेशन एला उठे